Can I call the meeting order, please? Is that showing up for call? Here.
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 Please stand for flag, one. Allegedly being civilized by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Unfortunately, the first thing up tonight is the attorney asked for an executive session, so... So whereas NJ has 10-412 authorized the township committee to exclude the public from that portion of a meeting at which the committee discusses certain matters, whereas the committee is about to discuss such matters where confidentiality is required for the attorney to exercise his ethical duties and his lawyer specifically run attorney-client privilege to legal advice regarding various issues arising from the options being considered for the township to meet its third round affordable housing obligation, whereas this committee believes the public should be excluded from those discussions and therefore be resolved by the Greenwich Township Committee on October 29, 2018, that the committee now go into executive session, closed session, and publicly excluded and that the committee believes that the discussions conducted in the closed session may not be disclosed to the public because they will involve attorney-client privilege, advice, and information. Anyone want to make that motion to go into executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
John, how much time you think we need?
If you guys didn't ask the last question, 20 minutes most.
So if it's over 20 minutes, that are gonna blame us.
Say 30 to be safe. Say 30 minutes.
I wish we had an easier way for Rustus to go into executive session. They're out of your phone. Looking for a motion to come out of the executive session?
Make the motion.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
John, do you want to explain what we discussed in the executive?
Yes, there's a, now, as you guys are well aware, this continuing moving parts on this affordable housing thing, but every time I'm out here, I give them an update because it's the only time I can talk to them as a group and obviously after the closed session because if it gets out in public, um, without identifying the bad guys, but the bad guys could find out.
Okay, looking for a motion to open a public hearing on ordinance O3-2018 in order to the township of Greenwich County in Orange State, New Jersey, adding Chapter 27 Affordable Housing to the Code of the Township of Greenwich to address the requirements of the New Jersey Superior Court. Anyone want to make the motion to open public hearing? Make the motion? Second anybody?
A second.
Roll call? Yes.
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 Yeah.
Okay, so, this is the first ordinance, number three, 2018, which is an ordinance of the Township of Greenwich, County of Orange, and State of New Jersey, adding Chapter 27, quote, "Affordable Housing," end quote, to the Code of the Township of Greenwich to address the requirements of the New Jersey Superior Court. It's, it holds a statutory judgment action. So for this ordinance, I'd like to swear in Dan Alvin, who's one of the township's affordable housing planners and one of the township's planning experts. Please raise your hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and that the truth will help you out?
Yeah.
Just so the public understand, Mr. Alvin's gonna give a description of the ordinance and then it's open to questions of him about the ordinance, and then ask the questions about the ordinance, and it's open to comments by the public. This is not ordinance five 2018, which is the MF1 ordinance, that's coming in seconds. This is three 2018, the Affordable Housing Regulation, that he will explain what goes on.
The Affordable Housing Ordinance is an ordinance that is required, uh, to be adopted by the settlement agreement that we had with Fair Share Housing Center. It's an ordinance that every unit's valid, uh, that, uh, is required to be affordable housing is adopting. Uh, most municipalities have adopted versions of this previously, in previous iterations of, uh, Affordable Housing, and it's a, it's a requirement as a standard. It effectively, uh, codifies COA's rules and the, uh, as modified by settlement into the municipality's, uh, code. Uh, it dictates, for example, how many different units, what certain other bedrooms have to be provided or may be provided, uh, how nets are, uh, determined, uh, what, uh, all of that is supposed to be eligible, um, what's the, uh, what, uh, the split house being between the different, uh, levels of, uh, income, uh, and various other requirements for creating and retaining and marketing of all the units. And that's the settlement.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Alvin on ordinance three, gas, 2018? I don't understand one damn thing about that.
Neither come up to the, uh, thing, give your name and address.
Uh, content chances for a district court search in New Jersey. He has been in this today. I have been for Saudi since 1990. What he just told us, meaningless to most of us, uh, he just gave us, uh, what he said is a, what he called statement, which is impossible for anybody to put together, no matter what the intelligence or political level is. So I'm not just specific.
We've been here for six hours, but we're specific, but the ordinance... Did you read the ordinance? It's still unfiled until the 15th date. Have you read the ordinance?
Sorry, what?
If you read the ordinance, why did you ask him some questions about it? But to come here and expect him to read the ordinance from front to back, the ordinance, this particular ordinance is 30 pages long. These are the mini-grading affordable housing...
You, you, just, you told us, but he has wanted that you, uh, talked to us about the ordinance.
He did. He gave a summary of it. That's, that's his job. That's what he's supposed to do. And he's supposed to answer questions. So if you didn't read the ordinance, I don't know what to tell you. This is a hearing on the ordinance. People are supposed to look at the ordinance, get a copy, read it, and if you have questions, ask them. He just gave a summary. That's all you have to do. He, he's not expected to read all 30 pages. You're expected to know me.
It is, Doc.
The notice told you that. The notice published in the paper told you that. Because this notice doesn't have to go to all... Anyone else?
Seeing no further questions, does the mayor or the township committee have any questions about this ordinance?
Oh, I think you guys have any?
No.
Motion to close?
Would the minutes reflect that Mr. Spencer is here?
Yes.
Motion to close?
Well, no, he said, he said questions followed by comments.
Correct.
Alright, so you can ask that.
Now, does anyone have any comments that they want to make about this ordinance, not five 2018, that's gonna come in through question list? Any comments about ordinance three 2018, the Affordable Housing Regulation? No.
Okay. Okay. You have a motion to close comment?
Motion.
Do you want a second?
Second.
Roll call? Yes.
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 We had a second reading in the public hearing on ordinance O5-2018, uh, MF1 District zoning ordinance for, uh, Dumont Road.
Now, this one again, even though I already...
We have to make, I'm asking for the motion to open it.
Yep.
Anybody want to make the motion?
Make the motion.
Aye.
Roll call? Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, John. That's okay.
I'm gonna swear in Mr. Alvin again. This is a separate proceeding, separate ordinance, and you raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you're gonna give to Mr. Spencer will be the whole truth, and the whole truth will help you out. Same thing. Mr. Alvin is gonna give a description, a summary of the ordinance, and then if anyone has any questions, they can ask questions about it. And at the end of the question, if anyone wants to make any comments, you can swear and make sworn comments about it.
The MF1 ordinance provides the standards for the creation of affordable housing on the site that's commonly referred to as Dumont Road, or Block 26, Block 2. Uh, it allows for multifamily affordable housing, uh, 100% affordable housing, meaning all communities actually affordable to low-income households. Uh, it permits, uh, not more and not less than 71 units, maximum building height of two and a half stories, 35 feet, uh, 12 units per building, if you buy four, uh, property, private properties, uh, around the side and rear lot lines, uh, to reduce the visual impact, um, and includes, uh, circulation and parking devices as well.
Did you mention, did you mention any needs on...
Yeah.
Anybody that would like to come up?
Yes, it, it will permit, permits, uh, not more and not less than 71.
Anyone like to come up and ask, uh, any questions about the ordinance?
Questions on ordinance five 2018, the MF1 ordinance, from Mr. Alvin?
Yes.
Are you supposed to go in?
Yeah.
Bill Delia, 13 Barnes-Swallow, Fort Smithville. How come they, they're only referring to 71 units and not the 140-some originally additioned?
Uh, the original, uh, did say that this side would have up to 144 affordable units. Since then, the plan has evolved to, uh, split up the, those units between the Dumont Road side and, uh, another side which is, uh, still in process. Uh, the actual number of units that would be created to lead our number here is 121 units. Uh, so it would be, uh, planned, uh, up now to, uh, 70 units on this side of Route 70, or 50 units on another side, uh, including area, uh, and it would be as well as to be affordable as the ordinance.
Okay, but do we have another place? Why are we passing this ordinance? I mean, why couldn't you just say not more than 121 blocks or, uh, 71?
Because right now, we have, uh, we got another place, but we're in process and, uh, John, do you, do you actually speak as a...
I'm not, I'm not willing to say we have another place. I'm willing to say that we are engaged in negotiation for other places and not necessarily in one place. And in order to get the exten, uh, extension from Fair Share and the court, in order to give us time to negotiate, to find another site on the other side of Route 78, we had to agree to go forward...
That was a quick proposal there.
Yes, we had to go, agree to go forward with an ordinance for the Dumont Road site. So the question is, why is the Dumont Road site at 71 units, whereas before there was talk about splitting it 61 and 60? That's because the governing body directed, me and the planner, that it was gonna be 71. And if you guys were here to write the governing body directed that, that was due to a recommendation that the land use board made. And if you, and some of you were, that I can see the faces that were at the land use board meeting, you'll know that the land use board was not talking about 71 until the end of the meeting, when actually Pastor Rudy Mancarone addressed the land use board and suggested going to 71 rather than 61. And the land use board deliberated that, believed, they recommended 71 to the mayor and the township committee. The mayor and township committee accepted that recommendation and introduced the ordinance at 71 units. And that's why there are 71 units in the ordinance.
Okay. I guess, and then my question is, if you said 121, not more than 121, wouldn't that work? And then you don't, then if, you know, despite everybody's efforts, uh, plan, whatever comes along, then we have to go back and redo another, do another ordinance?
That's correct. And if the second amended settlement agreement actually says, said if the township can't hold off and find this other site for the rest of the units, then yeah, they have to go back and so-called option A, which is 121 units. You might ask her, why is it done this way? Because it counts even once. The thinking was, if they adopted an ordinance that said up to 121 units, they were not gonna get real interest from the people that have to be negotiating with on the other side of 78 to negotiate without them seeing that you...
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, that was, yeah. But now you're giving them all, they're giving them leverage.
Uh, actually not. Because they know ultimately, even though, yeah, it'll be a little bit of a pain, they have to redo it. Ultimately, they would have to redo it, and they will redo it. It, it comes to that. And as everyone knows, a certain thing's public. Option C, for example, is public. And then Option C is unilateral rezoning of now a 44-acre portion of a Dallas site, which publicly is one of the reasons that the number on Dumont moved from 61 to 71, because then if there's species issue in it, other Option C, then the market rate part of that, right, goes down to 200, or a total of 250. But let's say there's some other option being negotiated where it could be 100% private on that side. Maybe the 71 end up getting reduced a little on Dumont, if you pull something off over there, maybe we have to redo the ordinance anyway. But if the mayor and township committee are listening to the input they're getting, they're giving us a direction of where they want to go, and then I'm trying to, to set this thing up to the best of my ability so that I can actually pull the skin off. And I need to get extensions, we gotta do circumstances. To be able to have some leverage in the negotiation, we have to do other things. I cannot tell you, because I'm gonna stay here in this public, everyone else I'm talking to finds out of that. Right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone else?
Questions?
Comments?
No questions. Comments? Comments on this ordinance, on ordinance five thousand, five 2018, if you can get that one away?
I do have one. Yeah, it's Michael Black, 401. 401, Martha Rose, Bloomberg. So based on what you just said, is what is the math associated? The last time I was here, the math was, you're gonna put a bunch of market rate homes on the other side of 78, and you're gonna have a mixed use?
That Option C. It's not that it was gonna happen, that's Option C.
That Option C.
Right.
So that's still on the table right now?
Option C is absolutely on the table.
Sounds to me that Option C is gonna be the default if you can't get a homeowner or a lot to be done.
I can say, because I'd be lying otherwise, and it's too obvious to say anything else, that's right.
Thanks.
Okay. Your name again? Who's your question?
Questions?
Or comments?
Give me some way to... Under oath, who's your question?
Question.
Um, you're new here, so I don't know if you're willing to pick up, but, uh, let me just, uh, clarify a few, uh, at the final.
Uh, the question I have, can we conduct a proper investigative study of Greenwich Township's available lots that can be considered to satisfy requirements of this mandate by the state? And then before you answer, I can make a point, so please, I'm hearing that I'm asking, okay? Has the town completed, or the study, has a report, which we, the residents can review? That report must contain capital letters on the line, a map, with the criteria by which this study has been completed, okay? How roles, uh, for being today, in part under the question stating that promises must have, or ensued, et cetera. But I'm sure there are more criteria than just that, okay? It must be second size, and on, and on, and on, and on, okay? So that's my question.
Yeah.
And which we, the public, can review?
I'm not aware of this, but...
Then I guess it's a disaster city. Because we're really closing our eyes and aiming at the top, hit the goal, and we never did. Right?
The answer was, he's not aware of any study.
Okay, so, are you?
Yeah, I'm aware of study, but it's not available to the public. It's not part, the Housing and Fair Share Plan, by virtue of the Fair Housing Act, only has to include a map of the sites that were selected. It does not have to include a map of the sites that were considered and not selected. So I can tell you that over the last, since 2008, there were a number of sites that were considered and not selected, including up until, I would say, a couple months ago. But there's no obligation under state law to identify the sites that were considered and not selected. There's only an obligation to put a map of the sites that are selected.
I'm disturbed. But what about the, uh, township obligation to residents?
That's between you and your elected official. I'm telling you, legally, there was no requirement for it. And quite frankly, in my humble opinion, it would not help the process to put a map out of all the different sites they considered. Because a lot of the county managers didn't know the sites were being considered. And if they did, that could have caused more problems for the township than if they didn't know that the site was considered and was rejected.
Or create a harm to negotiations on the value of the property.
Please. That, that's included in my statement. I'm gonna say something, and then you, uh, both... Does anyone else have any other questions, or you want to go straight to comments? Because he's queued up for comments. Anyone, any other questions?
Charles Wright School question.
For the record, you know, you know, like...
Mike, Mike, 401, Martha Rose. Uh, the last time I was at a meeting, I requested a financial impact study scenario. Now, I know we have a lot of Option B and C, but within C, is there a financial study being done with respect to Lot A, Lot B, Lot C, market rate homes versus COA, to understand if you have to go for a market rate build-out, okay, in order to have a basically split development between COA and market rate? Where's the financial impact question? Should I ask that one question for this committee?
You didn't ask me...
Should I ask this committee?
Yeah.
But this is not a question...
I did, I did talk to the township auditor. He's not comfortable doing it with so many variables, because here's whether there'll be townhouses, whether there'll be condo apartments, there are a lot of variables he had that he wasn't comfortable making it. So if we're gonna do that, we're gonna have to hire a outside firm to do it. And he said it's gonna probably take several months to do. It's not as easy to run as you had suggested and as I had thought.
Truth be told, I'm a finance person, and I model 14,000 companies that are handled a lot more complex than what we're talking about here. And it's, excuse me for a second.
Okay.
Right? That can be modeled, okay? There is, you can model up to 20 scenarios using Excel spreadsheet and...
Maybe he's not comfortable doing.
Brad, you know what I'm talking about, okay? You know this could be done, okay? And if your township auditor can do it, then maybe he needs to find somebody that can, or maybe we should find somebody that can actually do this.
Yes.
Meaning that maybe your township auditor, with all due respect, is not qualified to do this, okay? Maybe it's time to find a auditor that can. And I think Brad knows exactly what I'm talking about. You can run 20 scenarios against 20 scenarios. You don't have to think a lot. You just say, okay, you go up townhouse, home, west, uh, apartment rental. You can run scenarios, maybe you exceed the EMG, and pure range of high to low impact, simple math. It can be done. But I'm hearing these township auditors just did not work to do it.
Wow, I would agree with that statement, but he, he did look into it quite a bit. And he just wasn't comfortable coming in and testifying publicly with so many variables.
But I get, I get...
He says there's companies that do it. He says there's companies that do it. I can give you any of the companies, but you're gonna have to pay them.
But at the end of the day, look, you're gonna make a decision that's going to impact this, this township. And to put the financials in the, as the last car on the train, is the one we can do with that. It has to be somewhere near the front and say, okay, what is the best scenario that we're about to undertake? It's gotta be up front. You just can't go into it blindly and say, well, you know what, we're forced into this now because we're gonna pass this ordinance tonight, and we're gonna be forced into Plan B or C. We don't even know what the impact is. And then what's gonna happen?
Option B, that.
Option, Option C.
Option C.
Option C.
E, E.
So, so, you know, if I look at my crystal ball here, I could look at two township meetings forward when we're gonna be forced to make the decision, once again, and we're gonna be forced to make a decision without any financial impact associated with it. That's, that's not good preparation. That's not a good way to prepare for a deal. And if your auditor can't do it, I, I think it's time to find one that can. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions before we go to comments? Do a comment?
Yep.
Okay, can you raise your right hand? You swear the following comments you're gonna make, and they'll be true. Call the township and come in tonight, or, uh, yeah, just face them out. Okay.
So definitely you're gonna give me the truth, the whole truth, and that the truth will help you out. Like, I guess I got one, one last time. Go forward.
Okay.
I will pick out, uh, what's your name here? The biggest speaker.
Michael Black.
Michael Black. I had been speaking about this issue, and it's shown that we're going down to the end point, and a freight train is coming, and we're saying, oh, we'll make it, we'll make it. But guess what? We're gonna make it. Because we have not done, not only financial analysis, but we haven't done an analysis. What is being impacted by the life of citizens, of residents, of this township? And without that, you cannot make a decision. You must go, close your eyes and go for it. And guess what? Your chances of sitting in both sides is next to nothing, all right? So that must be done. And if the party that we have hired, the board, is not qualified or unable, just find somebody else. I have been doing modeling since 1980. I'm an engineer. Everybody started, did a modeling, business modeling, as a consultant in 1990. It can be done, yes? They have to put different parameters and say, based on this scenario, this is what will happen. Based on that scenario, this is what will happen, okay? All of, all of us, including yourselves, you must do that so we know what we're getting into. You cannot just do this after we make a decision which way we're gonna go. So this has to happen. You cannot wait for it afterwards, okay? So now back to my original point that I went back here about the study. There is a perception, okay, I say perception, because I feel otherwise, but let's say there's a perception that the public, this folks here and some that are not just on campus, that the TC is not transparent, is not forthcoming, all the good stuff. One way to prove that in fact that has not happened is to basically provide the public with information. For example, okay, for example, when we say that, guys, we have explored everything, and we only have now choice, an Option C, an Option A. So, and the FDA says, okay, the administration says, in God we trust. Everybody else brings data. So, we, the residents of Greenwich, and you don't affect me for using the words first, all right? Okay, I say, in TC we trust, but we don't give a damn, okay? We acknowledge that, uh, we have two people from, from TC that were basically, were making themselves available to communicate with us, exchange thoughts and information and the like, okay? Now we need to have some transparency... Now we need to have some transparency, use another word, use another word, okay? As far as what it is that we have explored already, there are ways, councilor, okay, to present data and still not really basically should be started with a food. There are ways to present data about what we have been explored and what is available still, and folks, if we wind up having only choice, an option C, an option A, just what? We have no choice but to accept it. We're not gonna shoot you, but we have to see with our own eyes, that in fact, there is nothing else there, because we believe there is. Because as one of the, um, people here on the next door stated, says, show me the data that says you can only build it there altogether, not any other place. There's no data. We have told that that's what it is, and we're supposed to trust you and believe you. But President Reagan used to say, trust is very fine. So that's all we're asking you for. Nobody wants to pass on you, nobody wants, nobody wants to call your name, but we're first stated. No, seriously, man, we don't.
But yet you do.
But, but, but nothing will happen, okay? I mean, maybe you still get a little redwood, but you're fine.
I don't care, I don't care what you say about me.
I'm 64, I don't know.
I'm good. Yeah, I'm almost your age, so I'm, I'm pretty tough too.
Yeah, so, no problem. But the point is, we have to find a way to get this thing done within the constraints we have. I know we don't have a dozen of dollars to, resources to, to do this study, to do that study, so it would be very smart, but we have to basically decide on what basis we make decisions. We cannot just say, well, guess what? You know, we don't have any more time, we make, we make a decision, we make a decision. That's not the way it works, because all of us, you included, each one of you, okay? Who will be paying here for years taxes? Who might be forced to, to, to vacate the town because one year of the fourth year? I live in Grand Rock, in, in Dublin, Houndy, okay? And there were folks there that basically were born in Grand Rock, and they were getting to retire, and their taxes became so high, they had to sell their homes and leave. Do we want this same thing to happen here? I don't think so. What? Let's plan for it. I asked Paul earlier, earlier, uh, the, the game, the, the forum that's available, I said, what is the master plan for adults? And he said, we have a terrible plan. Which is what? If we have a terrible plan for adults, let's fix the damn thing.
Radicals, okay, I didn't understand, okay, I hear you now.
So great to meet you.
Yeah, I hear you, I didn't know what you meant at first.
So, I don't wanna take, take too much of the time here because I think I want to talk. My point is simply this, guys, let's get this fixed. Let's work together despite our differences, because we'll continue to have differences. We have, we have different perspectives, different ways, no good things. Let's find a way to work together to meet the, the deadline, to meet the requirements of the state, but at the same time, let's not really put everything in one spot, impossible. If no other choice, I guess no other choice, okay, right? But we have to find a solution that is reasonable, it is fair and equitable within the constraints.
So for, that question, so if a study came back and said, cause I, I know your position is to distribute, right?
Yes.
So if a study came back and said 121 on Dumont was the best solution, I think you said in the last meeting that you would think that that's the best solution.
I would support it.
Okay, so everybody know that, okay?
Okay, okay, but, but, but then we have to see, to see what can we do with the, with the folks that live next door to that. Maybe we're gonna give them some tax breaks or something, I don't know why. There has to be some remedy, because we can't really put everything in one spot and get the people that live next door to it, I mean, that's what.
But you just said you would support putting it in one spot if the study said.
I would support it, but then I would take action for the people that have houses up near there, give them some tax breaks or something, whatever. That's what, that's what people do if they want, if they do.
I don't think the tax breaks would satisfy them, but that's okay. And then would tax breaks make you happy if we put it, okay?
I'm not into finance, but I'm.
You gotta, you gotta understand.
Before any studies we do, we come back that 121 is better than 321.
You gotta understand, no matter what decision we make, people aren't gonna be happy, all right? We do a study, it says put every 121 there, okay? People on babies might be happy, I can say, but people on Dumont aren't gonna be happy. The study comes back and says put everything on babies, people on babies ain't gonna be happy, people on Dumont are gonna be happy. So, we could do a study, but I'm telling you, my personal opinion, I don't care, if the study comes back and says don't distribute and put everything on Dumont, I'm not supporting that. That's all I'm telling you right now. I am not supporting 121 units on Dumont. Too simple. So we could do the study, it could tell us, don't do it, I'm still distributing the units. That's my position.
As I say in my career, okay, that, on what you just said about putting all the other study, that's not impossible, that's impossible. You know what that means? That means it will never, ever, ever, ever happen, okay?
What will happen?
That, that, that the study will, will basically recommend that you put all of them in one spot, and they're, they're dispersed.
Oh, I don't, I don't think anybody did this, that's true.
It's very much a tragedy.
If you're using financials, which, Mike brought up financials.
You don't use the financials.
Okay, but if you're using financials, that, that could be a scenario.
You cannot.
All right, so how do you quantify all the other stuff? How do you quantify quality of life to somebody? Everybody has a different quality of life.
With, 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 with the reasons of the town.
So what are we gonna do? We're gonna survey, what's your quality of life? My quality of life is maybe different than your quality. You may want radibles, I'd rather have open space. You may want radibles, there are people that are ratable chasers. I'm not one of them, okay? So it's very hard, what Bob is saying, it's very hard to quantify, well, you're, yeah, it is, because financially, no. Financially, no. But quality of life, yes.
Allow me to explain, all right? Yes, I would agree with you that Mary and John still have a different perspective of the quality of life, but collectively, right? We are forced to work together collectively. We have to come up with criteria, which are gonna assign a weight to that, okay? And then once you get that criteria with a weight assigned to them, then you can basically do your analysis, okay? That kind of is done scientifically. I have done many studies like this from 1980 today. I could show you reports, okay? I, I have, I have a document that I put together in 1985, it is based on African, Africa, okay?
Let me just, let me just finish with this, I think we've had a lot of time, I think you'll admit that. Um, let me just finish with this. What we're trying to do, what I'm trying to do is make as many people in the town as happy as possible. It's almost an impossible task. And you mentioned names, I, I'll just, you know, we've been called since this thing started, okay? Clowns, we're corrupt, we have behind the door meetings, okay? All we're trying to do, okay, is make as many people satisfied as possible. That's our goal, okay? It's not gonna make the PPL, people on babies happy, it's not gonna make the people on Dumont happy, but there is no nefarious reasons why we're doing what we're doing, okay? And I would really prefer, I would really like for the civility to come back into the township, especially in social media, because I will tell you this, there are a lot of qualified people in the town that would consider serving up here, but they would not put themselves through what you go through in social media today. And when you get called by your fellow residents on social media, it's not right, it shouldn't happen, you know, we're trying our best, and I'm, I'm afraid that you're gonna have a lot of qualified people that are not going to wanna run and put themselves through this. And that, that's my final statement.
I'll agree with that, right.
What you just said, the last couple of minutes, basically tells me, we never, ever get anything fixed, because.
Cause I want civility?
Your thinking has not changed one bit, I'm sorry, etcetera.
What's my thinking? What hasn't changed?
The key word, quarterback.
Just remember, I'm one vote, okay? I'm one vote, I don't represent the whole committee, but I will tell you where I stand.
That's right. Can you raise your right hand? That's what I'm here about to get, you're the truth, the whole truth, the truth, I hope you got it.
I did.
You know, identify yourself and give your address.
Bob Stone, 800, American. Good evening, um, obviously there's a lot of tension going on here. Um, I also, to be honest, I happened to see a couple of, uh, articles and things that were flying on social media as a resident, or did we find due diligence, come down here and just be myself and find out the facts before I can make a decision on how I feel about this thing. My understanding is, it has to be done. Um, Mr. Black raised some concern, um, I'm in support, um, maybe possibly having someone doing some type of financial report, I hope that the committee will possibly entertain and consider that. Um, obviously this isn't gonna be an easy situation. Um, my two questions really are, I'm concerned based on the readings that I've come across that there is a huge impact on the taxes, um, and the school system, and burdens falling on the school system. I'm just curious if we get to come out along right now, and we're not ready for that, please let me know, but those are my two questions, just the primary two reasons why.
One question is about school taxes, I don't know, what was the second question?
Property taxes.
About property.
How does this affect property, or, or anything?
This is for you guys.
Yeah, Brad, you wanna address the school thing?
Well, under the affordable units that we have to put in 121 units, there was a study done by, that's a planner, it's out on the website, I'm doing this from memory, but they, they used a Rutgers data to estimate how many school age children would come into the township for those 121 minutes. I don't know, say it was somewhere around 50 to 60, somewhere in that range for the 121.
Wasn't as many as everyone.
Maybe 80, I don't remember, but, because remember, these are.
On the website, affordable housing.
There is a document that has that.
Documents that they have to be published.
So Mike Washington, if you're correct me if I'm wrong, it's approximately $15,000 per one student.
Put this right, under the law of the state of New Jersey, right? Every municipality in the state of New Jersey has an affirmative obligation to zone, to create affordable housing. The fact is that it can cost money to educate the children of the affordable families is not the reason that we can't do it.
I'm not saying that, but I'm, I'm going back to, it costs approximately $15,000 per class, is that accurate?
Well, no, it is declined enrollment.
It's half accurate.
In our school, the, the high school tuition is $15,000 per student, and that's, that
is a fee per student charged, um, so any students that enter the high school, that is a $15,000 per year charge. The cost at our elementary schools is, is a calculation, and there's fixed cost and variable cost. If you add three children to a classroom, and you don't have to add a teacher, it's not gonna add $45,000 worth of cost to the school, it's gonna add some incremental variable cost that'll be minimal, you know, for curriculum or some other incidentals. If you have special, if you have children who have special needs, and the cost for that is substantially higher because the, the classroom sizes are smaller, you would need aides, so it depends on the grades and the mix, it depends on the needs of the child, so it can, it can vary. The elementary school, the cost per student, you remember, you have all this building and overhead, it's all fixed, whether there's 600 kids in the school or 800 kids in the school, the cost to maintain it, to heat it, to, it's not gonna change, so that calculation is, is gonna depend on number of students. The high school though, that is a true incremental increase to the district, so any kids that go into that high school would be $15,000 more per student. But as Mr. drill said, in, in the last, uh, September meeting, um, where I called in, as far as the 121, you can't go out and argue with the state and say, it's gonna increase traffic, it's gonna increase cost for police, or it's increased firing EMS, it's not just school. And it's gonna increase school because it is, has already been argued, and it's already been lost by townships, as an argument was that it's an unfunded state mandate. And we've done this at the school district, when I was on the school board for six years, we fought a lot of things over unfunded state mandates and we lose. There's, so the 121, whatever additional cost that brings to the town, we're eating it, period. So get over it, there's nothing we can do, no matter what the study says, we're gonna eat it, so just take it. The option C, it, Mr. Black was talking about, if we bring in market rate inclusionary, that's a choice. We don't have to do that. So the additional kids, that is something where, to Mr. Black's point, a financial study could say, is it beneficial, or does it add additional cost more than the tax radibles that would come in? And that's an argument to say, well, if it, if it was a cost, if it was a net cost, then that would suggest that the taxes we collect today from all of the township residents don't cover the expenses, and that's not a true statement, we cover the expenses. So additional taxes that come in on market rate homes to pan to fair share should cover any additional costs in theory. You'd have to do a study to actually prove that, but the 121, that's a cost to the town. But now, there's gonna be some offset, there's gonna be pilot fees that we'll get, so.
It's hard enough to eat it.
The state's telling you to eat it, I'm not.
You, well, you just said.
Well, I'm, I'm relaying what the state said through a court decision. They said, you can't argue it. If, that, that the need to provide affordable housing to those who have low income is greater than what the additional cost to those townships, that's a state decision, not mine.
And if that's the case, then I respect that, if it is, um, what I'm asking again, do you guys reconsider Black's, um, report, so that we could just see some type of, something on paper that would be real helpful? Thank you.
Just to follow up on the number of kids, so the 121 units, according to the study that's on our website, would generate, I mean, 65 kids. So like, like Brad said, 65 kids can't do anything about it, it's gonna happen no matter what we do. The, uh, additional students from the market rate homes, I think we're talking 48 kids. So the only thing we have control over would be whether or not to add 48 kids to our school system. That's the only thing we have control over.
Well, I'm sorry, Brad?
Yeah.
You said that majority students will be going to elementary middle school, correct?
Well, it's hard to say it was 65 or the 48, what.
You didn't say that, by the way.
Well, what, if, let's just call it 120 kids, the argument says, school age children from five, you know, kindergarten through 12th grade, just divide it evenly, you just said 10 kids per student. We're gonna have, we put.
10 kids per.
10 kids per grade, 10 students, yeah, 10, 10 children in each grade, so that would be, we just did a straight ratio that way, you'd have 40 additional children at the high school at $15,000 per student, so that's $600,000, do the math. The rest of them at the elementary and the middle school, and I'm not speaking for the school district, wouldn't be $15,000 per student, it would be something less because they have enough classrooms to accommodate.
Ballpark.
I, 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 I don't know, it wasn't a discipline during the season, it's, you look at the, the budget, and you look at the calculation, it's something like 12 or 13,000 per student. But again, remember, a big portion of that is fixed cost, so if you have 10 kids in a grade you're adding, and they have three classrooms, where you can disperse those 10 kids, 3, 3, 4, you don't need to add another teacher. Now, if it's children with special needs, that's a different, that's a different story, because then it could raise the cost more. So the elementary school, my guess is, there would be substantially less than additional cost that we would get at the high school, but that's my personal opinion. Um, but again, that, that's, the biggest charge would be the tuition at the high school, because that's a fixed charge, that's a per pupil charge, um, and we pay that for every student that goes there. So if you add 40 kids in a year, that's $600,000 per pupil per school.
You're saying, but it's powerful that we can see those numbers.
Yeah. Understood.
I was just following up on that, because of the numbers relief.
You go ahead, go ahead, cut it off, please.
Oh, Michael Black, 401.
Yeah, raise your hand.
Okay.
If you raise your hand when you're testing, it'll be two, both of us have to put 40 down.
Mr. Mayor, Brad just did three scenarios in a matter of five minutes intake. That's exactly what we need. He's got the facts, he understands how the logic can flow. He's laying out to you a high and a low. Your auditor can't do what Brad just did in 10 minutes? I, I think you need to question, and Frank, to your point, do you want the social media to stop? I'm not saying a part of it, I really don't care less on social media. Put the facts in paper, put the numbers here, Frank, just say, hey, look, you know what?
I, I didn't say.
No, no, Frank, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, but.
You know, people want transparency, they want to understand things. What you're probably hearing is just frustration because they're thinking that they're not getting what they need to know what this committee is doing. If you put it on paper and say, look, you know what, these are the scenarios, these are the financial impacts, and if it goes to C, this is the high and the low, that's full transparency, you can't argue with the math. You're not telling them an absolute number, I'm not telling you it's gonna cost you this, but it could cost you A to B, that range, that's what people wanna know, that's what they wanna hear from you all, that's exactly what I'm talking about. You've got a guy that just did it, there's no reason. You've got a guy that just did it, there's no reason to worldwide your order and not do it.
Just to follow up, I didn't ask for people to stop using social media, I asked for them to be civil, that's all I'm asking. You don't need to be calling people clowns, you don't need to be saying they're corrupt, you don't need to say they're incompetent, you just don't have to do that to get your point across, that's all I'm asking for.
Tim Mason, 14 blocks of our court, who is just running your best, giving the truth to the whole group, I'm going to keep the hook there.
I do. All right, well, problem with social media is that there's no repercussions, there's no law, there's no law against, you know, calling people names on social media, it's a shame, because, you know, realistically, when you really look at things, this is the first time that most of you guys have had to deal with this type of situation, so I think a lot of us are learning as we go along, and so, I don't think people question us slack while, while you're trying to figure things out. I mean, I know that, you know, Mr. Drill here, he's got a little more experience, because that's what he does, but I mean, the rest of us are all learning a whole lot about affordable housing as we go through this process. A lot of us are not happy with the way things are going, but that still doesn't, that still doesn't take away from the fact that, you know, people are still trying to feel their way through this thing. You know, getting back to, getting back to schools, just real quickly, because I know we probably beat this thing to death here, is that, you know, the enrollment has dropped, but let's not forget that even as the enrollment has dropped, the school taxes have not dropped. So, it's hard to say, it's hard to really say what will happen when we add students to the school, and it really depends on how many students we add to the school, and how many students does it take to add to the school before the cost per student changes? You know, how many, how many seats on, on another bus does it take to change the cost of, of adding a student? How many, how many bus routes, you know, how many, how many bus routes that will be added? I, I, I like, I like the idea of knowing financially where we stand, but as we've talked about a number of times regarding option C, if that were to happen, once, once we, if C were to get approved, then you're basically handing the keys to a developer who comes in and says, well, I want to build this thing according to how many units you want. That's, that's now out of, out of your hands, because you've said, you've given them how many, how many affordable units, and what, what income level affordable units they are, and how many marketable units, but, as we've talked about a couple of times, you have no idea how many are going to be rentals, and how many are going to be, you know, sold outright. So those, those things can affect on the financial analysis that's done, as far as impact on the town, impact on emergency and, and safety equipment and officers. I, I talked to, I talked to the chief, Chief Hama, and basically, he said, well, you know, there wouldn't be any kind of financial analysis until, you know, until these units were actually constructed, so there's really no way to have, you know, the, the police department is not looking to try and do any kind of financial impact study before that happens. So just, you know, just kind of just saying, just putting it out there for you and for anybody else who's interested in what I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Gilliam, 15 Barnes Hall of Court.
Would you touch on your best, give the whole group a point, give the other guy?
I do. Mr. Marchetta, I thank you for your counter about where you stand on this issue of splitting up the affordable housing. In one respect, I think I agree with you, it would be desirable to disperse affordable housing throughout the township. However, I think you have to ask yourself, has it cost? And that, I think is, what people are trying to sneak up on here is, is the cost of option C. We need no A, and there's not a darn thing we can do about it. But there is, you know, we're, we're making it, if you decide to go with option C, then I think it's fair to ask, yes, it's desirable to have dispersal of the affordable housing, but how much do you want to pay for that? And we, we can't even get the first cut on the number, but that's just a point, and I'll drop that. I would appreciate if, if they're willing to, hearing from each of the councilmen with the same counter, you, you realize, where's it standing?
I intend to, I want to close my comments.
Okay. Dan, I would ask you, if you have some gentlemen that would consider-
Yeah.
-stating your, your position.
Just to follow up, keep talking about financial costs, okay, and there is a financial cost. Most likely, I think, most people agree, it's probably a higher front, it's going to be probably a higher financial cost to C, but there's other costs involved, it's quite, listen, we already have 70 affordable units on that side of town. We're talking about putting on a 121, we're making one side of town a low rent district by doing that. There's a huge cost to that, you're putting all of the affordable housing on one side of town. You can't, yeah, you can't quantify it financially, we can't justify the numbers, but you know what, sometimes you know the right thing to do, and the right thing to do is not to create a low rent district on one side of town, and have everybody that lives there have to deal with all of the affordable housing. That's my stance, that's my opinion on it. Well, it's 121 plus 70, that's the case I'm making. It's 121-
70.
The 70 is already there.
Where?
In Greenwich Chase. And that's like a quarter mile right down the road, the two-
And what are the problems with?
It's not the problem, it's, it's, I mean, why are we, do you think it's a good, I don't, I don't think anybody would say, good planning principle is to have all your low and affordable housing in one area. I mean, towns try to disperse it, that's not a good planning principle.
I disagree with you.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you can't put a financial cost on that, though.
Yes, you can, you have to.
No, how do you put a financial cost on that?
The numbers.
No, but the, the numbers, I said, are probably would back up your theory, that C is not, is probably more costly financially, I think we're all going to, we're all going to concede that, okay? Now, the, the thing that we have to wrestle with is, okay, there's a financial cost to it, okay, and maybe we need to know what that is. But me personally, that financial cost would be outweighed by having a town that has all of your affordable housing on, in one area. I don't think that's the right way to plan a town. Me personally, but I agree with you, I love to hear from everybody else up here, what their stance is, so, um-
Well, I, I think we definitely agree to disagree, but I, and I agree with you in principle, but at what cost? And there's, there's intangible costs on both sides of the road. I mean, what are you doing to these people that are going to, I mean, consider? Dumont side is a cost to transportation, or to, you know, it's an ideal side, it's why you have to set the highest score.
And that's why they're going to get 71, because I don't think 121 is the number. You gotta remember, they're not, they're not getting rid of their affordability, they're taking a large obligation there, people don't understand that, you know?
But in the interest of, of pursuing a social goal, i.e. dispersal of your, your affordable housing, you're sacrificing, there's a limit to how much you can sacrifice to achieve that goal.
Three?
There is no limit.
No, the limit is 200 affordable, uh, market rate homes.
Okay, well, what does that do to this side of the town? It fundamentally changes-
See, this is what, everybody, this is what it's coming down to, okay, and this is what we're struggling with. You have two sides of town of different interests, I think people gotta start being honest about what their real, what their real objectives are. Your objective is, your, that's right, and it's not going to be a cornfield. You realize what that, you know what that's zoned right now? It's not a cornfield, it's zoned research office. Okay, so tomorrow, if a big lab wanted to put a big laboratory right on that field where those cornfields are, we couldn't stop it. If it conforms to zoning, so, you gotta get the cornfield thing out of your mind.
I know that, I know that.
So, and listen, it's hard, I would probably be out there with you, I would probably be out there with the Dumont people if it was my property. I understand where you're coming from, I sympathize with what everybody's coming from, I don't want to put it by anyone, okay? But we have to, you know, and we're trying to, but we all have different opinions, it's not because we want to hurt anybody, I don't want to hurt, I wish I didn't have to hurt anybody. Huh? You suggested I'm trying to hurt you?
No, he said he's not.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, yeah, listen, and I, and I, and you know, you know, I get back to everybody who contacts me, you know, I'm trying to give everybody my honest opinion, and, and I know, did Dan help you out, by the way?
Yes, he did.
All right.
I apologize for not-
And I apologize if I came across as being harsh on you, I apologize for that.
Yeah, thank you, Dan, they were helpful. Who's next? Would I, can I just ask a kind of off the record question?
No, 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 do it after, do it after the-
Okay, can I, okay, that's fine. Anyone else have any other comments on ordinance by 2018?
I got one that's coming to close it. So, so everybody understands, this C, option C, is not, remember what the, what it said, it's option C and other options. So don't think, don't think that this is the absolute endgame right now, okay?
Publicly, everyone knows option A, that's the 121 units. Everyone knows option C, that's 71 units which, hopefully, will be voted on tonight, that half of it, with 15 plus 200 markets, but let's just, not, not for public consumption, let's just hypothetically say that there's an option D, there's an option E, and there's an option F out there, and let's just assume that these options D, E, and F, you know, have 100% project going on, and the other side is 78, so they don't have to do C, and they don't have to do A. I just don't know hypothetically if we're going to be able to pull off hypothetically D, E, or F, but I can't talk about it, so I know that everyone's debating, everyone's thinking that it's only going to be A and C, and I can say this, that that's the only things out there publicly, but that's not the only things being worked on, that's all I'll say, and I think that you guys have known me long enough, even though it's not more than a year, but you've seen me in other contexts, you've seen me in the Land use board, I'm not, I don't lie, okay, but, but when I just tell you I can't say something, I can't say it, and I'm not going to tell you, no matter how many times you ask me, but I'm just, I'm just saying, okay, option A and option C are not the only things out there, but unfortunately, those are the only things publicly that I can say. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear on testimony you're about to give, we'll keep the whole group, something with the people who help you down?
I do.
Right, dance by yourself, somebody else can give you others.
Andrea Sherwell, 204, Bondway. So I appreciate, thank you, Frank, for everything you're doing through this, I think throughout the summer, all of us have been part of many test meetings, and said, backface, put all the high density in one place, will increase crime, it will have an impact on, on property rights. So, I know we're supposed to talk about other areas of town, but we've all aligned, the best place would be diverse versus diverse, and I appreciate those examples supporting that. So I think we talked about intangibles, right, we've, all summer we've talked about, there's some unknowns, right? We've asked those questions, that if it were to be affordable rentals, what would be the efforts to protect, concerns about crime, the impact on the kids that are right there, that are going to have to walk to school, there are other impact to states, and, you know, well testified that these variables that can't be measured. So I think they're no different, and in fact, it also would be a financial aspect of it, because there are certain things that when you learn score, you can't put right, you know, the best way to load up, to load up so it doesn't have all of an impact. So, I just want to make that comment, because I do think that that side of town, if you will, has been very reasonable since the beginning, to stay fair and balanced, and not have it all the way to the end.
You raise your right hand?
Yes, I do.
And you swear that the testimony you're giving, that you're giving the people, that you're giving the whole group, something with the people out to that? They're in there for the rest.
My name is Doris Falcone, and my address is 13 Barnes Hall of Court, in St. Louis. And I think the, the question is not that we don't want it split up, because I live on the Beatty Road, and we are happy to, if it may be, accept 50 affordable houses. The part that's difficult to deal with is the 250, and I believe it's 250, not 200, 200-
200.
200 market homes, or buildings, or units, or whatever we would call them, that are coming attached to this. And using Mr. Carone's numbers, just for the school, and ballparking, and so on, that would be 10 more students for, I don't know, grade level, classroom, we have a quality education system here in Cleveland, and it's known to be a quality education system, and I think it's just, there are many things that we have to look at, and I think it's the package deal of 200 more, plus the 50, plus the 71, and I think that's the value that is upsetting, that it's not 50, it's not 71, it's 300-
250.
250 plus 71, so that's what, 321, is that correct? Yes, so it's 321, and, and I think that's the piece, that it's kind of like, what just happened? So, for whatever it's worth, that's one of the pieces that does impact on quality education.
Just want to reiterate, the 200 market rate, 48 students, that's what we're talking about.
Do you swear on testimony you're about to give, something with the people who help you down? I have to give snoggrass, I can 11 out of 13, still. All right, I'm a little tired, I'm sorry, I'm going to let it from the government, I'm not trying to make sure you keep me, send harms away in two months. I make a point to say that, because you know what I just did? I gave you guys information about compromising state security, I was able to tell you people are going in harm's way, without telling you, how to do it. I'm allowed to do that, just like you guys are allowed to tell me bits and pieces of what's happened in our town, compromising, anything else? No. I don't know how many times I've come up here, and I've mentioned communications, it's getting really hard for me to count, every time since June? I don't know, it's been a while. And lately, it's come all down to stability, and what's been said, you know, hurting people's feelings. I understand that, like I have four people on this council floor, I could have been called many things, and I got over it, because when it comes down to it, it's what's behind the stuff, it's being thrown at me, it being a hole in the way, but that's what it's coming to. We have to attack the problem. When you fix that problem, the whole game stops. The hard at problems, because all of us are here, all the people still in our homes, because they have children, they have jobs, I don't know, they can't make it. But in the end, I watched a video from my session, and all the blue people, I think, that said it costs us from our part of town, our part of town, because we're splitting ourselves up doing this, and I was a lot more than that. And I know I have neighbors that don't come to this, because they feel nothing's going to come of it. Being reception, words I mean several times, several times, reception, the way you can correct that perception.
What'd you say, I can't hear you with this.
Perception!
Oh, okay.
The way you can fix that, is if you guys actually tell the people, tell what's happening, does anyone know how old the printing press is going to be in the last? Because I'm, 600 years old, 600 years old. You guys put it in paper, 1975 sunshine, right? Anyone here know what paper that is? Do you read it, do you get it? No, I don't, because there's other modes of communication, you can still use that printing press, and I think everyone would agree that's your option, right, there were big enough copies, with enough power in the town, you could walk it around if you had to, but you'll tell all of us that it's important enough for us to know as a community, what you're doing, you told us a pair of minimums, and has it out, you say something, hit it, but we just had something that was just built, that we enjoyed, vandalized, and when I watched this last video, make sure we have something in the budget to secure it, right? Overnight, but for six months, five months, whatever you- Overnight, but for six months, five months, whatever it is, we can't get a piece of paper sent to our houses. So, you can see why I know what I've said. I said it in a civil way. When I was on social media, I said it in a civil way, and then I had to keep reiterating it, because we're not getting to the point of problem, we're concentrating on little things like, well, it's called the mean way. I don't care, I've been through many things, I've had to stand in front of groups of admirers and explain why I made decisions that put people in a position where they die. You guys can tell me when you're building affordable houses, you can build them, all right? That's where I'm coming from. That's what I want from you. You guys work for me like I told you that you, I don't work for you. Understand, sir?
I work for myself, I pay taxes.
You work for yourself too, because you work for me, because I paid a little bit of money.
So, what's your point?
You pay a little bit of money. Do your job.
Hand job.
I can't mind you. Do yours. Because every time I'm here, I hear reasons why you can't do this, not why you can't. So, just do your job. Well, you have, I'll vote all of you back in, if you just tell me what you're doing.
I'm not looking for offense.
Apparently, you're not, apparently, you're not looking for this stability, because the only way to get anything to you is by shouting.
Last, last, last month...
Tired of it, they're tired of it too.
You trying to raise up the crowd, you trying to get a bloody scare? Well, let's, let me talk, let me talk.
For sake of, let me talk, I'm still on my time right there, so I'll get in and help you on the mic.
Yeah, come on, turn the mic.
So, so it's on the record. I haven't seen my children in seven days, but I spend time to come here and show you what I feel. All of these people took time to come here. Still smell like gunpowder, because I've been on a Range for a while, this is before they might die, but I care enough about my family, and what we're going through, to come here and tell you. It doesn't mean anything to you, because you sit there with this look, like, well, I just wanna go home, because I should, I'm sorry to take it. And I know Frank has his position, I respect, I respect all of what he do, but it raises my vibe, when I say the same thing every time I look here.
Listen, you know, spending time, if I were to, if I were to explain to you how much time I spend on affordable housing, you'd be amazed. You know what I did today? You know what I did today? I was off to work today.
Don't tell them what you were doing today.
I was off to work today, and I did something...
I just figured out what you did today.
For the town, all right, to address this issue we're talking about, okay? Took time off of work, drove seventy-five miles to build it, okay? There's a lot of stuff we're doing, that we can't tell you we're doing.
I'm fine with that.
But, but to think that social media is gonna, social media is not the way for us to communicate to you, so don't take offense if we don't do. I tried doing the social media thing. Listen, I understand, I gotta have a thick skin, but I'm just not gonna subject myself to being called these things, so I'm off of it, but, as I tell everybody, my, my email's there, everybody who contacts me knows this, and I will get back to you, everybody. You could call me up, I will, I'll answer the phone. So, we are putting my, now, I think, you brought this up a lot, about communication.
I have.
I think it's time we address it to you, and I, I think maybe, maybe the mayor's gonna address it after we're done, but I like to address it one way or another, either way, I know Paul brought up, Paul brought up trying to get an email system going, um, we're talking about, the mayor's talking about who's gonna control that? What are we gonna put out there? How are we gonna put it out there? You know, is he gonna put it out there every time something comes up? What justifies something going? It's a hard thing to try to quantify. Now, I don't want the mayor to talk about this, but the vehicle has always been that the website is our mode of communication, okay? I tried doing it through social media, I tried giving people as much information as possible. Um, we're all looking at other things. I'm betting that no matter what we look into, it's still not gonna satisfy a lot of people, so...
Social media, I don't care, any form of communication, it's fine. But what I've been saying is you have to let the public know, because you still have gentlemen showing up and knowing nothing about this, right? Do we, or do we not? Yes, you do, right? There's a couple gentlemen here, they've never heard about this, like, a few days ago, a few weeks ago, they're showing up. If you told the entire town what's happening, it'd be like ripping off a band-aid. They know it, they decide what they wanna do about it, they might even come to you. You might have a lot of people want, to test.
I'm not opposed to it.
I don't know.
Not, not opposed to it.
That's all I want, and that's why I'm getting frustrated, I feel like I don't listen to you, I come up here and I talk, and it feels like I'm talking to a wall.
Yeah, but you have to understand, right, you're saying about having a thick skin and all that, right? Sometimes we listen to you, but we don't agree, okay?
But I listen, you know I do.
Yeah, and we listen to you too, but just because we don't act on something that you're saying, doesn't mean we're not listening to you, okay?
Do you not think that communication is probably the most important?
No, there are some people up here that think that our mode of communication should be the website, and that people have a civic duty to go to our town website and educate themselves.
Yes.
Okay? So, there is a difference of opinion, but you're taking offense to it, saying we're not listening to you.
No, I'm not. What I'm doing is getting upset with these five thousand people, and they have no idea what's happening, because you guys haven't tried to.
Matt, that's, that's bullshit, not right. I disagree with you. We have a public meeting every month, we publish it, we have special meetings, we publish it. This is a town hall, this is the greatest forum for communication.
How many people we have?
The greatest, so if people don't go to the website and don't know that we're having a meeting tonight, it's their own fault. It is. It's not a push, this is not a push, this isn't the Amazon of government, where you're gonna type in two days and expect it delivered on your doorstep forty-eight hours later. You've gotta make some effort on this.
We're going to move, people are going to move.
Why?
If you guys aren't moving.
Why?
I know otherwise, I know...
Then move.
I know you're...
What is, what is the fear everyone has? What is the it? What is the it that we're talking about?
I wouldn't say...
Is it the housing, or is it...
I would like to give you one example, if you let me finish, on, on your communication that you used last month.
Yeah.
The developers of the warehouses sent a letter to every single house in the township, and you loved that idea, right?
I do.
Well, can I talk? Please, can I talk?
No, no, I'm up here, and I'm...
Okay, well, then I'm not gonna answer you until you're done. But yeah, just three minutes, Ron.
I'm gonna go home.
Your time's up, your time's up.
The time that I put in for Massachusetts, not gonna leave.
Okay, thank God.
I can't wait to leave all of you, but before I go, I'm gonna tell you, most of us don't care anymore, we're tired of that, because you don't tell us anything, perception is you don't care, perception. I've said multiple times, I believe...
You think I don't, let me ask you a question, do you think I don't care? Do you really think I don't care?
I just, I know, I know Paul does, the perception is in your community, you guys told me, you're not changing the perception.
Right. I mean, I know it's not true.
I will, so...
Are you giving up the podium yet?
Yeah. Have a good night. Have fun, Mayor, it's your town, it's the mayor.
No.
Good luck in Massachusetts.
You wanna talk again? Yeah, got it.
Good night, all right?
Good night. Guys, don't do anything to change the perception. Come on!
Goodbye.
Goodbye.
Good luck in your next town.
No.
No.
No. Two things, in one minute, and I'm out of here, and we're losing, but the mayor, I know the law, so we're gonna do this. Focus, you'll get off this, you don't believe, I won't say much. Communication is a good way to, you go, you take back, right? The website, putting a deal out, if it fails, basically tell your child, what's going on, that's it, okay? So, think of it, so much about communication, everything else you can do, because I, I can put it on the next door. I'm offering myself, my latest, I even put this in doing studies and monitoring this type, I'm offering my services for free. It's been, it's been now in February, something, we've ever said, my, okay? If people will agree, including our council here, I will volunteer myself to participate in the forward, and I believe that, for the most part, it's gonna fix this damn thing for all, this is what the fix that we're doing is. I will be in at the next door, do what I do, I start from what I've studied in my life. People get, and it's a gigantic number of people from this side of the town, okay, and then from the other side, some of them, those will be people who are gonna participate in this. It's gonna come up, sort of criteria, in addition to the crime, I start the other one, sometimes. Crimeant is not the only way to make decisions, it's the other stuff, the soft stuff, but those stuff, the soft stuff, can be quantitative, okay, you can really quantify them, like qualitative scaling, zero to a hundred, so with these people that I mentioned, we can do the study, we can do modeling and so on, put something out, that everybody's gonna be behind it, and then we go with it. That's my proposal, I'm offering my services, free of charge. And I bet you, if you want to do that, you're gonna be able to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Council.
Anyone else that has any thoughts, I'll address all of you. I'm a little tired of it.
Nope.
There's a question, not a comment.
Oh.
Do you want to take it?
Yeah, yeah. Waited all night to ask it, I guess, right?
I'm wondering, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear that any comments you might make, past the tenth and fourth, tenth minute, with a two, whole two, hundred, but the truth, they'll be that? Put your name and address, please.
Two oh two, the one oh eight.
What's, is this person again?
Yes.
And how's your last name?
Wee, I'm Wee. I just wasn't clear, and one is a hard deadline for our township to, I guess, get back to the data of our decision, what I mean, like, what is...
I know what you mean, it's not the right question, but I know what you mean, so I can answer what you're intending to ask. So, our thing is not with the state.
With a fair share of housing.
So, our litigation, we're the, the fair share of housing centers and defendants, but our thing's with the court, Superior Court. That's who, we're, that's who we ultimately answer to. So, we have a couple things going on. Up on the website, the second amended order establishing a next step in this case, and up there is ten...
Yeah, can you hear that?
Okay.
And, but that's a quick question, quick question, that was not clear, I'm reading that, you know.
Okay, well, there are a couple things. We have to get an RSQ out for the Dumont site by November sixteenth, so everyone knows, the RSQ went out last week.
Yeah.
Right, we're, we're trying to get ahead of the deadlines. We have, the township has, until February twenty-two, two thousand nineteen, to select a developer from the developers who've responded to that RSQ. Now, if there's not a further amendment to the settlement agreement, and therefore, if there's not a further order, so if there's not a third amended settlement agreement, and if there's not a third amended order, which would dictate where the other units are gonna go, and in what form, whether that be a hundred percent affordable, or inclusionary, whether it be option A, option C, or hypothetically, D, E, or F. If we don't have that executed by January eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, then all the other stuff that we have to do with the settlement agreement has to be done by February twenty-one, two thousand nineteen. Now, if we, by January eighteenth, the drop date is January eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, because...
It's a mix.
No, no, January eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, is the drop dead date to either influence or further amended settlement agreement, or not. If we don't, then we're gonna have to adopt on February twenty-one, um, the way I'm reasoning this, option A. If on January eighteenth, the lease agreement is to option C, then it would be option C. If by January eighteenth, the lease agreement is to hypothetically, other options, then it would be the other option. But so, everyone understands, the default, the default is not option C.
Not.
The default is option A, which is a hundred twenty-one units on Dumont.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're giving will repeat the whole truth, nothing but the truth, or help you out?
You didn't even address it.
Brian Baylor, two zero one, Bonnway. Just wanted to thank you for still exploring options, spending your time looking for those options, and I just hope we can follow through and, and do something besides that. I'm grateful that you're, you're still exploring and trying to do something reasonable, and taking into account everyone's lives, and, and I know you're not gonna make everyone happy, but I know, like, Dumont site, we're gonna take our fair, fair share of, of seventy-one, and, you know, we know that needs to be done, and, you know, reasonable, but, thank you. Like, thanks again for exploring your options.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No more comments, and there's no more questions.
You wanna make a note to the claim? Well, made it, anybody second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just wanna address two things. One is the communication. Communication in this township is the minutes are on the website, and the meetings are on the website, so even if you read the minutes, you can figure out pretty close whereabouts in the tape you need to go to, for whatever your interest is. Everybody's not interested in everything in a meeting, a lot of this is boring. If it wasn't for affordable housing, this would be a boring meeting. So, and the system did work exactly how it's supposed to work. Those closest to being involved received notice of the zoning change on Dumont, that's how this all started. They got a letter telling them, hey, the township's doing something that's pretty darn close to your house, you might wanna pay attention to this. That's how the system's designed, that's how it works, there's no hidden things here. That's how they started to come. In fact, the Bayes people, where I had a better argument, because we never really wanted to change anything yet, they never got their letters, right? They never got a letter about it. So, really, Bayes should be up complaining more about communication than Dumont, but Dumont seems to be the one that doesn't like the communications, I, I don't get that. But, but Mr. Snodgrass, last month, used the example of the warehouse developers sent a piece of mail to every single house in the township. That night, because of fire regulations, we had to keep count, there were ninety-nine people, about fifteen, sixteen of them had to be here, us, the professionals, the clerk, fire chief, the police chief, so it's like eighty-four people. About thirty people, forty people come from Bayes Road every meeting, about forty to fifty people come every meeting from Dumont. They sent out a letter to every house in the township, it got about twelve extra people. So, do you want us to send a letter every single month, at forty, what, the forty-nine cents? I don't even know what a stamp is now.
It's about thirty-two hundred dollars to me.
It just makes no sense, and how, you know, and government's not here to hold your hand through everything. I've been here since nineteen eighty-one. If your house was built after nineteen eighty-one, nothing personal, I didn't want you. I don't want any of your developments, to be frank, right? I want a cornfield stone, that's not reality, so...
What about the Gazette?
The Gazette?
Who's Gazette?
What do you wanna put in it, though? Because if, whatever we put in, I know if you were here last month, whatever we put in, someone's gonna say, who decided what to put in? Why'd you word it that way? Is that what you think, or is that what factually is true? So, we'd have the same...
Why should I just allude to just putting the issue in? You know, saying like...
Hey, look, everybody in the township knows, anybody, I, and I get in phone calls from people, they're very aware of what's going on, and, so I, I don't buy that communication's bad, that's my, that's my feeling. In fact, there's only a couple people complain about it. Now, the comparisons, Mr. Dillon's question, I'm not a finance guy, Mike, and I'm not a scientist, but I'll tell you this, a hundred twenty-one more homes, units, where there's seventy, that's a hundred ninety-one, and eight hundred housing development, between that and retail, I, I don't see where those numbers are at, that's inclusionary, two hundred to eight hundred. So, you can make that argument. The infrastructure's already there, the roads have turning lanes, there's signalized traffic The roads have turning lanes, there's signalized traffic controls, everything's there for that already. Most of the people living there are going to go to twenty-two, seventy, go to work and come home. They're not even coming down for English streets in the town. So, you can make that argument. And I'm getting this because the insinuation is we're stupid, and we don't, I understand what's going on. It's going to be cheaper to build a hundred and twenty-one units for everything, the schools and the town. That, you don't need to run those numbers, right? A hundred and twenty-one's going to be cheaper than three hundred and twenty-one. No, I'm not, no, we don't, we're not having a dialogue.
Whoa, 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 Mike, Mike.
I'm not calling you out, I'm just...
Well, I don't use my name.
Okay, I won't.
It's his deliberation here. He's entitled to, he's a public official, he's deliberating, he's entitled to say...
I, I won't, I apologize.
Want to say something, say something to me earlier.
I apologize. Well, yeah, well, that, that's what I'm getting at, is the transparency of the public's not exactly there either, because, if you're four A, why don't you just come out and say A? Why are we asking for comparisons? You know what the answer's going to be. People calling on the phone are giving the answers, people sending emails are saying what they want. A lot of people afraid to come because of what just happened earlier, especially older people. So, then you want to put two hundred homes on Bayes Road, which is a rural road, it's a township road, we're talking about realigning it with one seventy-three, ingresses, egresses, and everything, so you can make the argument, that's crazy. But the bottom line is, is not the money, it's what Mr. Dillon mentioned, and, and what the lady from Avon Lake said. What is important to the quality of life for everybody? That's what we're trying to do, is just make it fair for everybody, that's what we're trying to do. There's no hidden agenda up here. I'm not for A or for C for any personal reason, I'm not making any money off of it, I mean, to, to suggest that, to, I'm not, I'm not saying, but to suggest that there's a, some hidden agenda up here is absurd. We're trying to make this as least, the least impact on everybody, everybody. So, after tonight, I have no problem if we want to hire a professional, start running these numbers. I appreciate your offer, Mr. Constance, but I'm afraid that if we use you, whichever way you go, the other side's going to say, you had a, you already had a, agenda, so. But I appreciate your offer. So, with that, I'm, I'm looking for suggestions for the committee, if we're going to hire somebody to do these impact studies, we know what the answers are going to be, and after we get them...
Have you said something?
Or maybe you could talk to the owner and put in better wording on what we're looking for.
Can I make a suggestion to you, like, can we get a vote on the Gordon's stats? That's what I'm concerned about, or is it five, two thousand eighteen?
I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Any comments?
Well, first, I mean, there was, you know, without using names, individuals coming up and asking about the studies, and, ten years ago, I think, at least, you know, before any of the members up here were on this space, there were studies done, and the conclusion was to buy the piece of property on Dumont. That was the outcome of the studies, and they, and the town spent a lot of money to purchase that property. That's the outcome of it. This town owns one piece of land to do affordable housing. We own one piece of land, Dumont. There's only another piece of land presently that can accommodate, and that's Dow Trak. That's it. Period. That's it. The other positions, as far as the finances, I agree with Mr. Black, um, but understand that we are pursuing other options, so, depending on how those turn out, we may need to study more than one. So, we need to see where those develop, and then do a study on all of them. I mean, as far as the, the, the other things, you know, communication and, and social media, and I appreciate what Mr. Snodgrass said, you know, he's got a family, so do we, we all have jobs, and in the order of things in my life, this is third. No offense, my family, my career, this is third in my line, okay? We get paid four thousand bucks to do this job. I may work for you, but it's third on my list, just being honest, you want to hear my position on it. I have other things to do as well. I've lived in this town twenty years, I know a lot of people who live here are helped a lot more than me. I've volunteered my time for the last fifteen years, to coaching, to scouts, six years on the board, to this, and to, to be, to, to someone to come up there and say that I don't care, if anyone else up here doesn't care, clearly hasn't lived in this town long enough, and Mr. Snodgrass has only lived here for a few years. He doesn't understand that time here, in this, in this room, along with Dawn Marie, is the reason we have a good space in this town, because they fought for it, they actually put their time in for it, instead of just being a, what is it, warrior on the social media. It's one thing to go out there and be a social media warrior, it's another thing to put your time and effort in, that these people have done. We're here for you, and, you know, if we didn't care, as some people say, we wouldn't even be having this meeting tonight. It'd be a hundred and twenty-one on Dumont, it would have been approved back in May, and we wouldn't even be here tonight. So, to say that we don't care, that's BS. And I'm just going to say this, this is my other position I've got to say, is because I'm tired of how people are, are talking about this project, and again, it's the state mandate, and we keep referring it to in this cold, banana-like way, it's housing, it's it, where are we going to move it? What we're talking about are people. These are people who just need a little help. They're not all criminals, and when this discussion started back in June, this is what I heard from residents of this town, criminals, pedophiles, deviants, gang bangers, drug, you know, deads. I heard people say we're going to be a building of hood, I heard people say, someone from Greenwich State, that they're going to need to build a wall around the development, put gun towers up. I mean, it's ridiculous. These are just people who need a little assistance. I have family, ancestor, uncle, friends who live in affordable housing, they didn't stay there permanently. What we have here, what everyone is so concerned about, and what's really, you know what the issue here is? It's fear. People have a fear of what this is going to bring. I'm not naive to think that there's going to be some people who are going to move in here, who won't have behaviors that we find acceptable, but that's just life. There's always going to be people, no matter where they live, that are going to have behaviors that we don't find acceptable. But if we're already making a prejudiced opinion about people who haven't even applied to something we haven't even built, that it's just going to be a problem, we need to go look in the mirror. This is about people. It's not about units, density, and so the crap, people want to defer and deflect. This is fear, that's just because somebody makes a little less money than them, that they automatically bring a problem. These are people who are going to be schoolteachers. You know what the starting salary of a brand-new schoolteacher is in our district? Forty-nine to fifty thousand dollars. They can qualify for a moderate-income housing, yet we're willing to allow our kids to spend six and a half hours with them, but then we don't want them living with us. Or the person who cooks your meal, and you feed it to your kids, because you don't want them living with you. I mean, if we really, truly believe that we're good Christians, or whatever faith we practice, go look in the mirror and, and understand what is it you really fear for. Because I don't fear it. If people are going to live here, they're going to be as good as we expect them to be, and if we're already putting this prejudice on them, that they're going to be no good, then that's what you're going to get. But if we believe in them, have faith in them, maybe they'll be as good as you and accept them into this community. So, have a little faith, it's not going to be a problem, it's not something to be feared. They're just people. It's not units, it's not housing, it's just people.
And, and, just from my own personal opinion, or, you know, going off of what Brad said from there, has anybody ever done any research on, like, the town of Felsburg with the, the projects over there, the affordable housing issues? Does anybody know that a governor from the state of New Jersey came from those projects in nineteen sixty to nineteen sixty-eight? Do you? Yeah, Governor Robert B. Minor came from those projects over in Felsburg after World War II, lived in those projects, and then grew up and moved over to Lincoln Street in Felsburg. From eight years he was a governor in New Jersey, and he was born and raised basically in those projects over there, all right? So, it's not bad people coming out of those projects, or coming back, or moving in, it's, it's what you make of yourself from there. And Mr. Snodgrass saying, like, he puts people in harm's way and stuff like that, listen, dude, you want to talk to me about putting people in harm's way? You go clean your partner's teeth out of his mouth after he got shot in the mouth, and shot in the leg, and shot in the arm at three o'clock in the morning, all right? Then you can come and talk to me about putting people in harm's way, all right? Or seeing your guys laying there dead, or whatever, okay? To me, that, he's, he's just a bullshit guy for everything else, he's a paper pusher, keyboard quarterback, I don't give a shit. That's wrong, all right? We, we do the best for everybody that we can up here from there, and, and we try to make everything work correctly, okay? Whether it's this side of town or that side of town, okay? We try to make everything go, to, to make everybody happy. Is everybody going to be happy? No, they're not going to be happy. But we try to mix and mingle to make the things the best that we could do for our town itself. We all live here, we have children, you know, we're neighbors, we're partners, wherever, we try to make it work. So, we're not here to disrupt anything, we're trying to make everything work, to bring the best of this community from here, okay? That's my personal opinion.
I just want to add one thing, Mr. Snodgrass, not, I know you were trying to convey there, but I believe Mr. Snodgrass serves this country in a military fashion, so I don't want to...
Which is fine, I know, I...
No, I, I think you need to, you didn't understand that, and I know your, your emotions are high, but I respect what he does, um, serving this country. We may have differences of opinion, I have a feeling that when he goes home, he's going to calm down, he's going to come back, and, um, he's going to be a lot better. So, I don't, I know emotions are running high, I don't, I don't want to signal him out as much, um, but he does serve his country in a military fashion, so, I know you respect that, and you didn't know that, so, but I know that, I know, you respect that he does that.
Okay, I respect the military one hundred percent, man, but he's not the only person in harm's way.
Totally contradictory, but not the contradiction, getting back to the units. Even if all one hundred and twenty-one this time would end up on Dumont, you're done, you're never have to worry about it again. Twenty twenty-five, we got another round coming. Bayes Road, if you get bypassed this time, in seven years, you may be right back here again doing that, doing this. So, that's why we're trying to, I don't know, John will probably yell, but disperse it, which takes away land and takes away, yeah, okay, disperses, disperses for other reasons than just the density issues, but, uh, but anyway, this issue's going to be back in twenty twenty-five, so, uh, if, however it goes, wherever you live, don't go away, because it's kind of, if, if you, you want, you want, I'll give you one suggestion for communication. If you're really interested in affordable housing, second Wednesday every month is Land Use Board, third, Thursday, is Township Committee, and put it in there to repeat for ten years for a reminder, because this is going to be a topic of discussion for ten years in this township.
I'm just going to, I'm going to be brief, because lots of things I agree on, I touched on. I do not fear the development, because I'm afraid of, of working-class people who are financially challenged. Um, there are just jobs out there that just don't pay much, and, and it's the bottom line of our system, uh, somebody's doing that work, and, and to have an opportunity to have affordable housing, uh, I, I think is an option, and that's what the courts have said, so we're going to do it. The financial studies and things of that nature, from my point of view, and this is only my point of view, I'm not going to pay all that much attention to it, because it doesn't matter, the court have told us what we need to do. So, I don't, regardless, one might be a little more, one might be a little less, we have to do something. I can certainly get on board with trying to disperse it around the community. With that being said, I am a ratable chaser. I would like to get something in return, uh, for that, and that's why I am still continually exploring options. Don't know if it's going to happen or not, but I'm exploring options.
You can just don't go into the details.
No details, no, no, there's no details to go into, because there's really nothing to go into.
Have some faith.
But, uh, uh, I, I am open to some suggestions, and the downside to that is, the Dow property has the infrastructure, uh, never mind, okay? It's already, there's stuff out there in place.
Put wire ahead.
Right. See, you, this, we tried to tell you, but we keep it silent.
Right. So, with that being said, uh, um...
Thanks for having me, Sean.
I, I think we're moving in the right direction, and, and none of us have a hidden agenda here, and we're going to do what's right for everybody.
Okay. So, now I'm looking for a motion to adopt orders oh five, twenty eighteen, MF one, district zoning orders. Anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions or comments up here? Roll call.
You have a motion?
Yes.
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 Okay. We're done with the planner?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to adopt orders oh three, twenty eighteen, ordering so the Township of Greenwich County, Moore County, New Jersey, adding chapter twenty-seven, affordable housing, to the Code of the Township of Greenwich, to address requirements to the New Jersey Superior Court.
Make a motion.
Roll call.
You have a motion?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
I hope people are still interested. I'm looking for a motion of public comment. Are you not myself?
Well, after public comment, I have, I want to go back to the closed session on another affordable housing issue.
Oh, I know, I know, I'm just, what, public comment is next?
Things are said.
I don't want, I don't want to go on a week, so I'd rather let them do it.
Yeah, do the public comment first.
I'll look, anyone want to make a motion of open public comment?
I'll make a motion of open public comment.
Anybody second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come out and make a comment?
Don't worry, we got all the bar.
Name and address.
Get everything out.
Uh, for the downtown support, uh, this side, for me, uh, I've got, I've got, you folks, this, uh, obviously, you have no idea, that, you don't know what you're doing. Communication is a two-way thing, okay? Look up one initial communications, having a website, where people come here and look and listen, you have to communicate. How do you communicate with your children, with your spouse, with your husband? If you do, that you have some confidence, or you have some confidence, okay?
How do you recommend the two-way, how do you recommend the two-way communication? Just curious. How do you recommend the two-way?
The way we're talking right now.
Okay?
That's kind of good.
So, we're doing it, you're saying?
You're not, you're not.
Because you don't like the answer.
Frank, 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 let me make it plain for you, because obviously, you aren't getting it, all right?
Yeah.
Until listens me.
You know I like you, right? No, I really do, I respect you, we've been working together, so don't take offense.
Until listens me.
I guess you don't like me. You didn't reciprocate. You didn't reciprocate.
Frank.
Yeah.
That's the box speaking.
Three minutes, all right? See, there you go. That's where I was going. Until they listen me, you folks have three minutes. And every time I would get up on the floor and speak, they may have, will cut you off.
Mm-hmm.
But she didn't like what I did, so I have to say.
You have three minutes.
Okay? Three minutes, okay? But what you weren't doing with everybody else, it's for half an hour, okay? But, yeah, it's not for half an hour, you're talking about cutting you off, yeah, for half an hour.
He's wasting his time right here.
Okay, I'll do, I'll do the thing with you, okay? After I do, if you think we talk too much, that's why they put the senior legislation on these, all right?
One minute fifty seconds.
So, I request that, we put, and once and forth, what we do with our technical, so that the residents, the doctories, we can go right, discuss themselves, and, and they have response, so it's a pick and pull, and then walk away, so, because like nothing you're doing is a favor, they answering our question, that's, that's the third point, several points that we're going to look at. The next point is this, the offer I made, I don't think, uh, it's an idea understood by that side, I wasn't going to take sides, this was in the back way or the highway, I was going to basically provide a vehicle for everybody to basically agree what the criteria, once you agree what the criteria, then you just let them up and draw, and whichever day, where they come, they have to live, because you cannot just say, well, this is the way it's going to be, then you do...
What if they don't agree with the criteria? Let alone what the...
Life is tough. Life is tough.
Well, but, you know, as I was educated, like, perception means a lot, so, the perception would be that you picked what you wanted to lead the criteria.
No, 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 you have, you have this side, that side, do it, okay? And then you publish it, as I said before, people argue with you, so be it, people argue all the time, but the point is, is you did, you did diligence, all right? You put, you put everything out, that's actually what the point was, okay? But, yeah, another reason was, put the facts out, and I said, FAA says, in that we trust, everyone has pretty data, that's all we're saying, okay? Uh, and there is a way to present information, even though you're under what you call, uh, you know, CBA or whatever, just, there are ways of communicating.
Okay, thanks, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
All right. All right.
Spike of Black for Parker Road. I think you guys can break down the rules, by the way. I think the website works, um, only information that you want, as well as having it on webcast or, or evidence, I don't, I don't find a mission with that. I don't find it an issue with that. Mr. Mayor, to be very clear, I am actually in favor of dispersing. Okay? And your comments about financials, I'm just trying to understand what the impact is and trying to understand what's ahead of us. I think that will go a long way. Whether that be option A or option C. I just think we all should know what the impact our tax bill is gonna face. Thank you, George.
Thank you.
I just wanna say...
Name again?
Roberts.
You ask me your name a lot here.
Again, I just wanna thank everybody for their time and inspiration. Feel more at ease coming to a meeting, getting the facts, hearing everyone speak. I feel confident in their abilities. I'm very satisfied with how you manage the resources here in the town. I will say I would strongly recommend a timekeeper. I think it would help.
You want the job?
Again, a timekeeper up here would be beneficial, I think, with respect to the gentleman. I'm sure he has his opinion. But we wanna hear everybody. And it's just, there's not enough time. And I think a lot of people aren't coming out, particularly because sometimes we get sidetracked. So we could just consider that.
We usually try, we're pretty legal with time. And we know it's a highly emotional issue. I mean, everybody, everyone's in the house. Everybody understands, as Frank said, if I was on the Yvonne Way, I'd be here with the Yvonne Way people. If I was on Beatty's, I'd be with the Beatty's people. I mean, that's just, that's just reality of life. And to shut people down when it's that emotional, you know, I don't think everybody wants to be the bad guy. You wanna make sure everybody gets to say what they wanna say. Typically, we do try to limit it. If we did what suggested the enter, this won't be here until three or four o'clock this morning. I know, because we've done, not three or four. If I've been here until midnight, twelve-thirty, with people asking, going back and forth on issues. So I agree, we should keep it. But it's hard to shut people down, too.
With respect, being keeping order, I think after three minutes is...
You may have to change the game. You may have to change course, is what he's saying. I think you're... They're gonna sign you their arms here. I appreciate that recommendation. Okay, anybody else?
Chat break. I have just a quick comment on some implications. I know it could be option A, C, D, E, F. I would just ask that if you can communicate that option instead of having a, getting a township meeting, voting on the approval of that option. If I generate a team, if you know option C is out, and option A is in, that's a resolution. They can form the public's...
We've let everybody know the bees dropped.
The minute, one of, the minute these amended orders are signed, we put them up on the website. The problem is the fear of announcing it before the other side signs it. So sometimes it's two days before. This one was like, maybe October 9, and it wasn't called October 18 because of the county's hearing. But if you let out there, and if things not signed, you either got to back out or the deal...
No, no, I thought you meant jump the terms out. Once you make your mind up, the township, they agree on A, C, D, E.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I agree with that side.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be on the website.
Then you just...
Yeah, yeah.
You might not have voted, but I had a township meeting. Like, you make your mind up.
No, no, we can't make our mind up until we have a township meeting. Just so you understand, there's sunshine was.
It could be a violation of, you know, that. It could be listed on the first track. It could be listed on a special meeting. This was, it could be listed on the agenda of a regular meeting or a special meeting. It could be listed on the agenda for potential approval of blah, blah, blah. But they can't make that decision in private. The decision has to be made here. And my advice to them is if the decision is made, don't say anything because that could blow the option as a deal.
I'm assuming, I think, you're talking options. As we get options, we'll put them up on the website. Well, no, once you say so, once you say it's okay. Once you get to the point you say it's a viable option, we thought I would A and C.
I understand.
And hey.
But the other, I'm just...
The other options we wanna go to.
See, I wanted to tell you.
These other options are so sensitive that if we did that, the option could disappear or the entity has been asked for a lot more money. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a last-minute thing. You're gonna have to check the agenda. I mean, you know what? I was telling people after last meeting outside that when I have a private client, he can do anything. When you have a public client, we can't have them make a decision before the meeting. I mean, I can talk to different people. I can't, I can't even call him up to the firm. I can't talk on the phone with a firm with them beforehand.
Okay, I understand that's the rule. But you have to do it by January 18 on some option.
I understand.
So I'm nervous. All I'm asking is that, is there gonna be a special meeting January 18?
It depends. If we make our...
The dates in here were picked on purpose. I think if you look at a calendar, my guess is you're gonna find that most of the dates here is a date after a township meeting meeting or on a Friday. Okay? So this was done with a lot of force for that very reason, to try to get the thing lined up so that a decision could be made. You know, it's just the, you won't find out until you check the agenda. So you guys, it's like the mayor said. You guys gotta check the joke on the website. Just check the agendas.
I guess if you're, if you come up with option D and the meeting has no idea that that's...
You're absolutely right. I'm telling you, if you want any chance of any of these other options to happen, that's how it's gonna have to be. If people don't like it, I am sorry. But if those options are made, how does the warehouse option go? You know, with the public stuff and everything. Okay? And debating publicly. These things are highly sensitive. And if these are made public before... My object is to try to get whatever other parties we're dealing with to commit in writing first. And then they can either accept or reject. That's the goal, the legitimate basis. The day ever went first. I can't use foul language, but the township would be... I don't think it is.
I think you have D, E, and F, all three.
I'm not saying I have D, E.
All three you've got. I'm able for D, E, F. And you bring all three options to the township meeting. It's kind of a communication for that you're having that meeting to decide on D, E, and F or whatever it might be.
You may do it in executive session.
You may do it in closed session. It's like we have a closed session before the meeting to discuss things like that. I might purposely, because by law, they have this pending affordable housing authority, actually. And I am allowed to talk to them in closed session and give them legal advice about other options in closed session. You guys will have no idea what I talk to them about or if I talk about that. And that's done on purpose so that a municipality can actually make, you know, make the deal that if it was in public, otherwise it just gets blown up.
Hey, John, if I could say something. I mean, is it okay to just say, to the extent that we can share information with you as soon as we can, we will do that?
Yeah, that's a fair statement.
We will do that. We're not gonna delay it. As soon as we are allowed to share it with you, we will do that. And if that means a day before, a week before, according to the councils, we'll do it.
I'm just trying to set an expectation.
Right, that it could be any last minute. But at the same time, we're gonna, just understand it. All of us do care. All of us do want you to know. We all live in the same community. We're all gonna be with you miles of wherever it's going. So, and I know some are closer than others. But we're all gonna be impacted by it. So to the extent that we can share with you as soon as we can, you have a promise, we'll do that.
Thanks. Anyone else? Anyone wanna make a motion to close public comment?
Make a motion to close public comment.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before, we wanna go executive. Before we do that, I'm looking for a motion to appoint Beth McManus of Kyle McManus as a second affordable housing planner and township planner subject to entry into a mutually acceptable contract. Anyone wanna make that motion?
Yeah, let me just put something on the record. So if Dan was here for CCH and Beth wasn't, this is a matter of public record. Beth left CCH and started her own firm